Time being seven o'clock. Seeing all members of the planning board being present, we call this meeting to order. First item on the agenda, Agenda Item A, approval of minutes, March 4th, 2019. So moved. Motion to approve the minutes. We have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Moving on to Agenda Item B, committee reports administrative actions. Any committee reports any of the members would like to make?
None right now.
Seeing none at this time. Moving on to Agenda Item C, 260 North Billerica Road, family suite special permit. Do I have a motion to waive the public reading?
No.
Motion made in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. All right, do we have somebody here for the family suite? You guys would come on up. Just as a reminder to everybody, our clerk is not present this evening, so everybody speak clearly into the microphones, whether you're at the podium or up at the, if you're coming up here tonight, so it can be picked up on the recording, so it can be transcribed for the minutes after, if you wouldn't mind. Could you state your names for the record? The floor is yours.
Good evening. My name is Tina Razzaboni.
Matthew Palmer.
All right. Floor is yours.
Oh, so I'm here, I would like to build a family suite onto my home at 260 North Billerica Road for my parents. Not sure what else I need to...
Oh, see if we had who has questions. Mr. Fowler?
Sure, and you could go on and say, and let the plans speak for themselves.
Yes, yes, let the plans speak for themselves.
I was a little concerned at the beginning when I looked at the drawn plans, and I said, "I don't know the dimensions on here," until I turned to page three.
Yes.
And, uh, and architect plans are...
I know we had, um, made some addendums to it.
Yep.
Um, just so it could go by the bylaws. We took out the front door. We took out the stairway between the two floors.
Well, you still have two means of egress, and you do.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
And it is for my parents. The, um, family suite will be handicapped accessible for my father.
Yep. I presume that's you.
Yes, that's my family, yeah.
Well, it's a nice thing, to be with the family. Very, very nice thing. Um, I didn't have any other questions, I believe. I went down and looked at the site. Actually, I took Mr. Delaney with me. Gave him a tour of the town today.
Okay.
It took about four hours. But it, once you see it, it explains itself. You're gonna have a little bit of excavation work on the left side of that house.
Yes.
Uh, to make it that grade levelers, in fact.
Right.
To the right, it's all below grade.
Yes.
Yeah. But other than that, I wish you well.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Mr. Reider?
Uh, thank you. I was a little confused until I got to the third page as well, with the sketches, but, no, I understand what you're doing, and as always, we like to approve these, so I have no other questions. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Mr. Delaney?
Yeah, the only question I have is, can somebody point out where the front door is?
On the second page.
It's on the second page. This one?
It's on the existing...
I'm just looking for the front door.
Oh, we removed it, so it might not...
No, well, it's...
It's on the existing house.
Okay.
It's there.
Mr. Vitale?
I looked for, we were there, I was looking for the front door.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also like the idea of having family, taking care of family, and that's what you're doing here, so that's great.
Thank you.
You gonna have any problems with the solar panels?
Um, no.
No?
No.
I didn't know if the supplies and readings is on the left-hand side, or...
No, it's on the other side of the...
It's on the other side where the pool is, yes.
So I do have solar panels myself, and I know they come down one side or the other for the meter and so forth. I couldn't see that today when I was there.
Yeah, no...
By the way, I was there today in the blue truck. I don't know if you remember seeing me out in front of the house, but that was me, so I'm not a stranger, so...
I hope our dogs didn't bark too much.
No, our, um, yeah, the, so the switch is on the, the other side, where the pool is.
The pool side?
Yeah, with the white fences.
Okay, good. Um, we have to ask, is, do you have sewer at the house?
Yes.
Public sewer, yeah.
Okay, good, cool. Other than that, I'm all set, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
All right. I am all set as well. I'll just make the notes that we typically make, which are, again, this is, we're approving that you can do it.
Okay.
The building inspector is gonna determine whether you can, whether you do it or not.
Okay.
So you have to meet the requirements of the building inspector, whatever, you know, whatever he needs, you know, you'll have to supply, and get the sign-offs for the actual building of it.
Okay.
This is just the authorization to have the family suite.
Okay.
All right? So, I'm all set. If there's anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns, please come up at this time. Seeing none, return it to the board. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion to close the hearing.
All right, motion to close. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. All right, as to the request for the family suite special permit?
Make a motion, do we approve the family suite special permit, as per the plan supplied?
All right, I have a motion made, I have a second.
Second.
Motion made in seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
All right, moving on to Agenda Item, Agenda Item D, 1420 Andover Street, Landplex special permit and definitive subdivision. Do I have a motion to waive the public reading? So, motion made in seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Gentlemen, once you get settled, if you can state your names for the record, floor will be yours.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, David Plunkett, representing the owner of the pass of land, Southern Realty LLC. With me tonight is Matt Hammer of Landplex LLC. Landplex, Matt is the, uh, is the engineer for the site for development. Mr. Chairman, this is a, basically a subdivision with special permit requests for the waiver of the build-out of the public way, very similar to a number of similar projects in town in which, you know, it's in keeping with the, you know, the, the concept that we're better off if there can be a build-out of, if the subdivision road can go in there, the town and everyone else is better off to reduce the impervious surface, take the burden off of the town for the upkeep and maintenance of the roadway, have a, you know, a homeowners' association, and this is very similar to a number of subdivisions of this sort in town. We had the IDR last Tuesday morning, and there, you know, weren't any major issues. I think there's been some changes to reflect questions that came up, turnaround of, you know, minor change of the turnaround capacity of one spot, but there have been receipt of comments by the fire department and the town engineer, and Mr. Hammer can go through, you know, the issues that he would address relative to the comments received after the IDR.
Sure.
I have a, I'm fighting a cold tonight, so I have a coughing fit, you'll know why, so...
Maybe if you put the microphone up a little closer...
Can you hear me now? Okay.
Really?
So, um, here's Andover Street here.
Just for you, again, just so it'll be picked up on the thing, can you just state your name for the record?
Oh, for the record, my name is Matt Hammer with Landplex LLC, 10 George Street, Lowell, Mass.
Thank you.
So here's Andover Street here. There's an existing parcel here. It's forty-four thousand, forty-four thousand nine hundred sixteen square feet. There's an existing dwelling on that res, on this property, which is 1428 Andover Street. Wooded area here. This is lawn area here. It's serviced with all the necessary utilities to that parcel. There's a second lot, which is here, which consists of approximately 2.7 acres. There's an existing, um, single-story, single-family dwelling here, and there's a commonly-used driveway that's here, that extends to the rear. That house is also serviced with utilities as well. There's a wetland area here, was delineated by North Environmental, and then there's also a small wetland up in here. The, um, the water actually sheds in this direction, and it also slopes down in this direction here. So we're proposing to lay out a right-of-way, which is here, in order to create one additional lot. That additional lot would be here. This, we're intending right now to leave the single-family home here, and to leave the single-family home here. There was a strip that was left over when laying out the 40-foot right-of-way, and this structure, as it stands today, has a, an encroachment over the lot line of .6 feet, so by adding this strip of land to this parcel, now takes that encroachment away from it going over the lot line. That'll be in here where that encroachment was, and now it'll be five and a half feet off of that side lot line, as opposed to being encroaching over. This is the right-of-way layout with three conforming lots. The grading goes in this direction. We're proposing to bring the drainage down into a swale system here, to a detention basin area here, adjacent to the wetland. And we've provided a full stormwater report, and we've also received some comments from the engineering department, which we'll address, and when we come back at the next hearing, we'll have a revised plan, and we'll have, we will have addressed the comments that came back from engineering related to the drainage. And we're also proposing to bring a low-pressure force main from this house here out to the existing sewer, and we're proposing a T-turnaround in order to turn a fire truck around at the end of this common driveway. As was noted when we did the common driveway for East Street, we're having the same configuration at the entrance to have the 24 feet wide at the entrance, so that a car, when leaving, a car can enter. And this drive essentially has the same specifications that was previously approved for the East Street project we did a few months ago with the board. We would be requesting the waivers to the construction of a, of a full roadway, which are listed in the cover letter, and also are listed here, related to driveway width, sidewalks, things of those natures that are commonly requested for waivers, or for this to be a private drive. Is there any questions?
And for clarification, Mr. Chairman, just, so the, the existing parcel will, the single-family identified as 1428 Andover Street, that lot remains intact. Nothing is, you know, nothing is being cut off from that, changed from that, it's that lot that exists that's known as 1420, that is then going, has the sufficient square footage to create the layout of the roadway, the creation of a lot retain, you know, where the current dwelling will remain on the conforming lot, the creation of a new buildable lot, so that will be the only addition, one single-family building to the, what's already there, and then those strips along the right-of-way, which could then be added to 1428. So it's basically taken the parcel that's currently 1420 and carving out a roadway, retaining a lot for the house that's currently there, creating a new buildable lot, and creating, allowing for some extra strips to be added as a buffer for 1428.
All right, Mr. Delaney?
The one question that concerned me today when I was down there, the first dwelling, how far is that off the, it looks like it's right on the, the street or the driveway, right now. Could you go over that part of it again?
The existing?
The first thing, right where you are.
You gotta use the mic.
Right to the front piece, the first dwelling.
Yep.
That's the one, like, there's a stone wall that goes down.
Mm-hmm.
That road.
Yep, right here.
Pretty much all the way, as a matter of fact.
Right to here.
Stone wall's pretty nuts.
Yep.
How far is that house off the, off the road? Or gonna be off the road?
Approximately eight to nine feet. Off the edge of this existing drive here?
It is. Okay, now, does it, is it supposed to be 25 feet?
How far off the...
From, from the edge of...
Well, yeah, if you were to take the frontage off of here, yes, it would, the requirement would be 25 feet. And I, oh, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
So, one of the comments that came up at the IDR meeting was is to create two additional parking spaces here, because we were gonna utilize this parking down here, and we're gonna be adding two parking spaces next to the dwelling.
Okay, I'm all set.
Mr. Vitale?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I spoke to town planner today about the, actually this evening, about, there was no concept plan brought to us for this project, correct?
Uh, that's correct.
If you may ask why? Usually that's always standard procedure.
Oh, wait, do we, no, sorry, it wasn't, uh, it was...
We were here about...
I just don't recall Mr. Plunkett at all.
We had an informal discussion. I, age is a terrible thing, but...
Yeah, I don't remember what it was. We weren't here.
We have had a rotating attendance lately, so it's possible one of us...
Yeah, I don't think I recall it, 'cause this is actually new information to me.
Oh, no, I'm, okay, I'm sorry, there was a meeting before the IDR with...
Oh, yes.
Johnson, Mr. Sadwick, and, okay, I'm sorry.
And in fact, now that Mr. Plunkett brings that up, Attorney Plunkett brings that up, we actually, you know, I believe Ms. McGinty was at that meeting too, were you not?
I was not.
It was probably two months ago.
Oh, okay.
But we had actually asked if we should do an informal agenda item, 'cause that's something we would normally do.
Yeah.
And at that meeting, it was determined that, that, don't mark, don't, I'm not exactly sure what Mrs. Sadwick said, but it's my understanding that he had said that he didn't feel as though it needed to go through that preliminary phase through the planning board at that meeting.
I'd venture to guess it's only because two out of the three lots, the houses on them are remaining.
Right.
They're not gonna be new to the project. That's my best guess.
Yep.
Because there's so little really changing. It's really a one-lot piece that's the real difference, that's my guess.
And we, and now that, I do remember, recall, that that came up, 'cause that'd be something normally that would come up. We go and meet informally with planning, you know, take their recommendations on where we should go after that meeting, and it was determined that we should just go straight to the definitive special permit.
Just a couple of questions. Did you mention that home in the back?
Mm-hmm.
As a livable piece of property or not?
Yes.
And how long ago was that occupied? Any idea?
Um, it has an address, it has utilities brought to it, and the developer has determined that he, he's gonna renovate that existing home, and, and, and put a new, and turn it into a new house.
Another question I have, was there any historic value to that home? It seems like it's...
Yeah, it's a neat looking...
Been old, been there for a long time, and it's a beautiful chimney that's there and a building and so forth, so...
Yeah, it's got some unique qualities to it, that the developer felt as though it was worth preserving.
Sure, okay. I see in one of your comments that you wanted to do a waiver of sidewalks. I just were wondering how somebody is gonna come out of that property to walk down to Andover Street, would be able to walk without sidewalks. I mean, you have to walk on the street, I guess, right?
Yeah, or the driveway, yes. If, if need be, we could create a shoulder in order to accommodate a walkway.
Okay.
But we could do that.
All right, at this time, I see you have a lot of issues with the, with the town engineer, so I'll hold to further questions until we see those.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Fowler?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a few questions. First is, can you ascertain that that building in the back was a dwelling and not a shop, workshop, or something like that?
I can't speak directly to that, but I could look into that with the building department.
I mean, what was the purpose of the 75-foot chimney in the back of the building?
I don't know, Mr. Fowler.
I mean, it could have been, but I don't think it was a dwelling.
If you go into the house, which you can go into...
Seems like the gentleman in the back wants this...
He'll have his turn.
We're gonna have to wait, just because otherwise we'll pick it up on the thing. You can, like, during the open? Okay, but just hold your thought, I'll let you get to it, but it's just, you don't have anybody to keep the notes, and it's gonna have to be on the recording, so you have to be at the podium, so we'll do it during the public comment section, if that's all right.
I like what he said, I think he answered it already.
Okay.
Well, Ms...
Do it again.
Yeah, right, right.
I can't say, I can't say, Mr. Fowler, if you go into the, into the building, it's got head carpet, there's a fireplace, there's some cabinets, there's linoleum flooring, you know, it looks as though...
I didn't go in there.
Yeah, I, and you have to be careful going in there. I'm not advising going in, it's in poor shape inside, but...
I had Mr. Delaney with me, and I didn't want to get him hurt.
Yeah. You gotta walk carefully, but it's my understanding, it has a street address, somebody did live in there in some fashion, I'm not gonna say that it was, you know, what the nature of the, of the, of the building was, and whether it was legal or not, but we can check with the building department and see what they have on file.
The soils maps that you used have two different addresses, 1440 and 1420. Can you tell me why?
The soils maps?
That's what it says. Figure 3.4 soils map.
Okay.
You have this book? Everything else is in there.
That's just my, it's the soils that are mistaken on our part, that's the...
Okay, so 1440 is probably wrong, too?
The 1440 designation on that map is incorrect. It should be 1420.
I mean, that's a minor issue, but I just wanted to bring it to your attention.
Sure.
The biggest, I have two other questions. Mr. Delaney hit upon the fact that the dwelling on the right side going down, number of 1428, is somewhat on the line, on the taking. Maybe not on the road, but it's on the taking, is that correct?
Ms. Attorney Plunkett.
Well, when you say on the taking, Ms. Fowler, I'm not sure, the, what's gonna happen is that there are strips, there's a little bit of an encroachment of that structure onto the 1420 property line, the, which, but, you know, again, that, that, that structure's been there, I think we figured it was either late, late 60s or early 70s, I recall, yeah, I remember when it was built. And, so, so the issue in terms of, you know, the question of what happens when you have an enforcement, can, you know, the town do anything? 10 years without a building permit, six years with a building permit, then it becomes an issue between the abutted property owners. So, you know, the fix on this is to say, okay, you know what we're gonna do? We're gonna address the encroachment issue by the fact that the landmass is sufficient to create the roadway and still have land left over for these strips, what are they, five feet or...
It's about six feet wide.
About six foot wide strips, which would then be conveyed to that property at 1428, and address the, you know, the encroachment issue. So the house isn't gonna move, the house is where it's been for...
What's that?
Forty-three years, or 42 years, and therefore it will, it will resolve the, you know, potential title issue between abutted landowners and saying, hey, you're encroaching on my property.
But the thing I think of is, there was not, whether you call it a road, a street, or a private way, that wasn't there, was it?
The roadway was, no, the roadway was not there.
So now you have a roadway there. Don't you have an encroachment issue on the side yard setback? Or in fact, this case, the side yards, this has two frontages on the street. There's a frontage on Andover Street and a frontage on whatever, whatever the name of this, Naomi?
Yeah. I, I would say that by nature of the fact that this house has been in existence, it's not gonna change, and you're creating a, a access road for a lot that exists in one additional house, I don't think you have an issue in terms of the fact that we're not building a house that close to the roadway. That would be my, my opinion, I'm happy to listen to anyone else with another opinion, but...
Again, like, some of the things, I think, the final say on this, maybe not the final say, but say on this, whether or not it's legal, is the building inspector asking town counsel.
Yeah.
But this is, my final statement is, without even going out there, I had a fear for this driveway, road, whatever you wanna call it. When you come out there and you wanna take a left to go towards Andover, you're gonna have a problem. If you wanna take a right to go towards Lowell, piece of cake. 450, 500 feet visibility. When you take a, when you take a left to go towards Andover, you've got about 150, maybe 175 feet from the where a cow would be to the curb, and we used to call that, I think Mr. Plunkett remembers it, it was the farmer...
Yeah, Martin's Farm. But they also, yeah, Martin's Farm, we, yeah...
They called it Martin's Curve.
Curve.
There were more accidents on Martin's Curve, and I was 34 years on the fire department, so I'm speaking for, from, um, my own... my own observation.
I, I lived beside Martin's Farm, and, but the trees were literally, including the tree in front of my house, which had a number of accidents, was, the pavement was here, and here was the edge of this tree that was 10 feet in diameter, and people, you know, you, you
Yep.
You had one inch, you had no leeway, if you
No.
If you veered one inch off of the pavement, you were smacking into this very significant tree.
I guess my, my question is, I'm concerned about what's going to happen if this is allowed to go in. Instead of one house being occupied, you might have three houses occupied, so three times the vehicular traffic coming out of there, and if they want to go left on a busy 5 o'clock evening, that's, could be difficult, so I'd like someone to look at this and see, I can't see what could be done. Can't straighten the Andover Street out, but it's something that I would like someone to look at, to see if they agree with, not just me, but other people that I've talked to.
And, and we, we can do that, I can talk to Mr. Hardeman, we have shot the site distance, which we have at 842 feet on that coming out, and we can check with the police department to see if they've had any issues there in the past as well.
Believe me.
After Martin's Farm was gone, yeah.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Mr. Ralph.
Thank you. The nice thing about going last is, they've already answered a lot of, brought up a lot of my questions. One, you know, significant, two significant things are the current two-story, single-family dwelling in conjunction with that roadway, or what will now be a roadway. In prior, it was a access drive to the back shop, house, whatever it may have been. So I'll leave that to the building inspector and town council, and also the entrance, you know, according to your plan here, it says 291 feet site distance
In the
to your east.
Yep.
I, I find it hard to believe that you have that based upon what you have for trees in that area. That's a concern. I see you have the 800 and roughly 850 feet west, but I'm concerned about having 292 feet of site distance pulling out of that driveway. And then obviously, there's multiple comments from the engineering, so we'll discuss those further once you address this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Even better, I get to go really last. Just for clarification. Two different lots.
Two different lots, yes.
And currently, the two-story building has a driveway that exists right where we're talking about.
That's correct.
That gets to that house.
That's correct, they use that.
And then, way back, and obviously it'll predate me, obviously, from what you guys are discussing, but this building that's in the back, that may or may not have been a residence or whatever, is on the second lot
Correct.
that we're talking about. Now, am I wrong to say that if nothing else happened here, that, that sure house, whatever it is, would have a right to come out onto
Yes.
133?
Yes.
The same place?
Yes, and I, and I don't think there was any question that that was used at some point in time, yeah.
What I'm saying is, so what we're really talking about is, if we did nothing, if nothing happened, two houses theoretically would be coming out in that exact spot onto 133
Yes.
without us.
Right, correct.
The only real difference is this additional third lot that's being requested would be the only real difference in how much more could possibly come out onto 133 in that spot, is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay, so then another question is, since they're separate lots, is there something in the way that I didn't see on the plan that would prevent a driveway simply coming in off of 133 to the existing dwelling on its own property, giving it the couple of feet it needs out of the other lot, and only having the other two coming out?
It could do that, yes.
Okay, so that's, okay. I mean, that would deal with some of this fronting issue that some of the members are having on the, on the common
That's true.
drive for the existing lot, correct?
That's a good point.
And nothing would stop anyone from being able to add that driveway to the existing house out on 133. So really, then the question becomes, do we really want two driveways in that spot versus one, correct?
Correct.
Okay, because I don't think we really want two there, but if, if it's
If need be, you could put that
it doesn't cause more problems, I don't know, I'm just asking these because
No, that's a good point.
You know, I see where the side of the driveway is for that house, it's on the street side.
Right.
I don't know why it comes in where it comes in, why there's a common, like, why there's a sheer driveway
Right.
to us as it is, I don't, I don't know why that happened.
Right.
I have no idea, I don't know if there's something in the way, but it's a question. Also, on the, on, as proposed here, this, this act, the common drive, can it go any further over, or is there a setback that I'm missing that's keeping it from being any further over?
Yes, it, it could shift over a little bit, to answer your question.
And then, I know, Mr. Fowler asked, like, what this back building was, could we, because it had to have been something. It was either a residence, or it was a business, but either way, it was something at some time in history, but it's there, so, I mean, it, it had to have had some, it's on its own lot, it's not like the second piece of property on another lot, so it's something, can we just clarify what exactly it was?
Yeah.
The last time it was used
Sure.
as whatever it was used? And obviously, you know, I mean, it, it doesn't fully reach there, it looks like, on this common drive, the, to, to the property either, so I assume that's going to be, it's going to have to go all the way to where that is? Seems to, the paving seems to stop short of the building.
Yeah, it'll, if you look on the
I was using the colored one here.
Yeah, the colored one, yeah, comes up and it stops approximately
Is it actually going to stop that far from the building, or is it meant
Well, we'll probably do a little bit of improvement there on that. What also happens in a gravel fashion, gravel drive fashion, is it also flared off directly to the building. You see the wooded area is separated in front of the building, and there was a drive that came down to the front of the building.
Okay, interesting, because the others go right to the houses, but that one doesn't, I was just asking.
And, and if, if I could add, you know, we do know that, you know, the property was partially used, it looked as though it was some landscaping business possibly of some sort, there's a few, a few walls, frost walls that are lined up here that looked as though there might have been material pushed up against them in order to conduct some sort of small business back there, so
Well, like I said, I mean, you know, the development's looking to remodel or whatever, that's, it doesn't really matter, I'm just, you know, I just wanted to know what it was before, again, it's the only structure on that lot.
Right.
One lot, so
Yeah.
regardless, it's, you know what I mean, it's, again, we're not talking about the second structure on the same lot, so it's not that issue, I'm just curious, what was it?
Yep.
When it was last used? So I guess some of those are questions I guess you can look at, you know, depending on which route you take on, you know, possible ways to address it, with the, how close the road is to the existing structure. If you're using the common drive, if it can go over more, that, you know, again, that creates a little more space, and that alleviates some of the concern, for whether or not that house is not going to be on that common drive anymore at all.
And, and also, Mr. Chairman, on that line of, you know, questions, the reality is then lot two, you know, does not have to be part of the, you know, I should say, 1428 is really not necessary to be part of this at all, from the perspective of other than the convenience of possibly having the driveway come off of the new roadway, you know, nothing comes from that lot, so we could even, you know, if there's a concern about having those parcels go over to 1428, those six-foot wide strips could be designated as not a buildable lot, and, you know, they couldn't be utilized, and they, they wouldn't have to go over to the ownership of lot 1428, and they could be retained, and you could just give an easement for them to retain their encroachment onto that non-buildable lot that's retained by the current owner. It doesn't make sense to do that, but, you know, if, from the technical aspect of, oh, well, wait a second, are you now creating a controversy with setback relative to a roadway that you're creating? But that roadway really has, you know, other than, you know, common sense application, what makes sense to, how to utilize it, that roadway has absolutely nothing to do with 1428, and there would be ways around it by, you know, and I was listening to the comments, saying, well, we could easily address that by saying, well, we're not even going to change that lot at all, we'll just retain those six-foot wide strips as non, you know, mark them not a buildable lot, retain the ownership, and then 1428 has absolutely nothing to do with the subdivision, so
I mean, at present, it does in that, that's how the, how you get to that house.
Yeah, but, but
If that stopped, then yes, but if it would continue
Right, but as I say, the, the difference between, you know, how could you address it from, you know, if it got bogged down into a technical aspect, there would be ways of dealing with it in a technical manner.
Right.
But, you know, real-world application would say, use common sense to make it work, that's for the benefit of everybody.
Okay.
Mr. Johnson, I'd like to add, if you, if, in the definitive subdivision application packet, there's a tax card for that parcel, 1420, says that the building was built in the night, in 1900. It's a ranch, it's, it says it's residential, and then it, it'll list out the first floor, attic finished, porch, basement, the aggregate living area, so that the assessor did have it assessed as a residential structure.
Okay.
And it says
How about the extreme, well, that, I mean, obviously, they gotta, they do that, but the, the rather large chimney that seems odd, but that's fine. Like I said
Yeah, it is an odd-looking
Ultimately, you're going to have to remodel it, regardless of what it was used, it stopped being used for some time. You're obviously, it's not in moving condition, so one way or the other, it's being remodeled, so that's not, that wasn't really my biggest, it was more a curiosity than anything else, because again, it is the only structure on the lot. It's, you know, a single structure on one lot, so it doesn't really make much difference to me, from that point of view, so that's it for me.
Mr. Jim, I have one more question.
Yep.
I have to ask this. Who is the owner and who is the applicant? I can't read those signatures.
The owner is Southern End Realty.
Who?
Southern End Realty. And it's also to the care of Frank Gorman.
Who?
Frank Gorman.
Gorman?
Yeah. Out of Drake, all of the LLC.
Is he the applicant or the owner?
Both.
There's two different signatures there.
Well, one of them is my signature as the applicant, excuse me, for the checklist, and the owner's signature.
He has to give the regone in.
We'll chuck it up to the pool.
Okay.
Mr. Jim, I have one question before you roll. Where are they parking presently for 1428?
In that
Andover Street, in the driveway.
In that side area right there, there's two parallel parking spaces.
Okay. I drove down there today, but wasn't looking at that, I couldn't help but take my eyes off the back building with the big chimney, so
So
I didn't take a look at where they were parking there, so
You know, Ms. McGinty brought up at an IDR meeting that we should add two parking spaces, which we're going to be doing in the next round of plan changes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jim.
All right, with that, I will open up to the audience for any public comments. You, you get as close as you want to the microphone, you're on risk, obviously, after our cold victim.
Those greenhouses.
Curious about that building.
You have to go to the microphone.
Curious of the chimney down there.
Actually, if you'd just state your name and your address for the record, please.
Name is Clyde Kling, 144E Andover Street, Butter. And that is it. Originally, that whole lot, including my lot, was one area, eight and a half acres. Through the years, it got sold off, I bought mine with an acre, .1 in 71, I think it was, and the house, the front house there was just being built at the time, and the builder moved into the boiler room. There used to be a greenhouse down there, and Tuxbury is known for carnations.
Capital of the world.
And history, from what I was told, was started in those greenhouses, and moved down to Chandler Street, you know, from there. But when I moved in, the greenhouses were still there, but the glass was broken and so on. But the builder of the house moved his family in there and made it as a apartment for himself, and why the house was built and so on, and then when it was built, his parents moved into the house, and he, and his family lived there, but when the parents died, he moved up front, and it was vacant for a while, and then one of the kids decided he wanted to live there and off and on, but there hadn't been anybody living there for, oh, six, seven years in that boiler room. That was, the chimney was for the boiler for the greenhouse.
Mystery solved, I like it.
You put, you put a very bright bulb on that, Tommy, you made us aware of what's there, thank you.
Almost like I have a little Scooby Doo episode. Anyone else with any other questions, comments, or concerns on this?
I've dropped.
One question.
Yep.
Yeah, my name is Mark Webb, I'm in a butter.
What's the address?
21 Sawyer's Lane, on the cul-de-sac up at the top here.
Very good.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with this forum, I'm just more concerned about, I have water problems in my, my, back of my yard, where the water comes from that property and goes all along, and I actually had to have an easement dug out with drainage ditches all the way back to the street on Sawyer's Lane. So, I mean, I'm not sure what, what the proper way of protecting myself from that, I just want to make sure that I don't get increased water flow going through the back of the yard.
But just, as, as a heads up, part of the requirements of these is that they're not allowed to do anything that would increase any water off the property, so whatever they do has to meet the requirements, or go through our engineering department and has to be signed off on, that they're not, again, by the calculations, but, you know, that they aren't going to do anything that's going to increase the water coming off.
Great, thank you.
As far as what they plan on doing to address that, I'll let the applicant comment.
I can say that you're up gradient from us, so all of our water is actually heading down towards the wetland area over here. Yep.
You guys bring the mic over with you, please, again, I'm sorry, but we don't have anybody to pick up the audio.
All of this water is heading in this direction. Mr. Webb is here, so I don't think you'll be affected in any way.
So right now, Mike, the water that I get flowing flows down
All, that'll
All the way down.
That'll stay the same. Yeah, like, we can't do anything to this area here.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
My name is Michael Downs, 10 Sawyer's Lane, I'm in a butter. I have the same questions as Mark does. My property is right here, I'm also concerned about drainage and grading. As the water's coming down this way, is it going to come over here to my property?
Again, all the grades here, the water heads in this direction, so it will not be heading in that direction.
And once it gets over here at the same time?
Once it goes into the wetland, it's in the wetland, I can't do anything about that, but there'll be a reduction in flow that currently goes to the wetland, now it'll be reduced.
Okay. Another question.
Since this property now is being redefined, if you will, there's an old easement here that you don't show in your drawings, are you considering terminating that?
I don't know anything about the easement, but I can look into that.
Please do, thanks. Thanks.
They're not gonna be able to hear him.
Okay. So if it wasn't, if it wasn't picked up on the recording, there was a question about potential easement towards the back end of the property on the lot with the currently uninhabited home.
And we'll, we'll look into that and see, see if there's an easement there that needs to be shown on the plan.
Just, sir, if you don't mind, if you don't mind, if you'd go back to the mic, I just wanna ask you a question. Do you know what the easement is?
It says it's a passway easement, and I assume it had to do with what was happening here, and it gave the prior owner access to the backside of his property. But it's not being used. I mean, I have, I have trees here, and if this is developed, I'm limited what I can do. I can't put up a fence, I can't put up.
So you're saying your property is just off the backside of that one, and then on yours, it shows your plans that you have showing easement?
I actually have a copy.
Oh, that'd be great.
Yeah. Again, I'll let you, you can give it to them. It won't do us any good if you give it to them and then they can figure it out.
On his.
Right here. You can see. Oh.
Oh. Well, that. I'll look into this, but it's not on our property. But we can look into the easement on Mr. Downs' property and bring some clarification to that.
So just for clarification for the next meeting, just, just check your plans, confirm if there are any easements that didn't show up, or you missed the first time. If they're not on your property, maybe they're just, it may be somebody else's, but it looks like it's their piece. I don't know.
That parcel that's now fronting and part of Soya Lane was actually, back in '96, part of, front parcel that fronted on Andover Street, and then it was cut off and made part of Soya Lane. So we'll have to find out and see what references in the deed for this Soya Lane parcel, but it doesn't appear to be on our parcel, but we can look into it certainly.
I didn't notice in here, but I saw it. I mean, registered land?
They were all registered land, yeah.
All right. So it doesn't get more accurate than that?
Yeah.
So whatever shows up on those plans is gospel as far as the state's concerned? So once we get it straightened out, we'll know what appears on what? But we'll have that clarified.
Yes, we will.
All right. Okay. Any other questions, comments, or concerns?
Again, the last question we have is, again, the stone house, the plans for that. Is it gonna be kept as a house?
Well, we, just, just so we're clear, we don't, it won't be for us to determine what that's gonna look like. We're approving, we've approved the same type of thing. Empty, you know, we have an idea, but we can't hold them to building a certain type of home, or even if they can necessarily remodel that home. So you don't, you don't know that now. We can't force them to.
No, I guess, let me rephrase the question. Talking about the stone building staying there, that's what I've heard here tonight.
Yes, we're considering that.
But it, considering or are doing that?
Yeah, well.
I just don't understand.
I have, I have Frank Gorman here, with Southern End Realty, just ran over from a hearing in Lowell. So I'll let Frank answer specifically to that.
Yes, state your name.
Frank Gorman, Southern End Realty, Drakeett, Mass, 1105 Lake View F. To answer your question, if you walk in that house right now, there's an existing kitchen, bathroom, living room, two bedrooms upstairs. Obviously not livable. It's been trashed, and you can't go in there during the month of August, there's so many bees, it's unbelievable. But our intention originally was to rehab the house. If the board so chooses to approve the extra one house we wanna build, I think our money would be better spent possibly as a new home instead of a renovation of that home. No matter what, that chimney has to go. It just, it just, I had no clue why it was built that way.
And we do now.
We do now, but still, it just, yeah, I prefer to put a brand-new house up there. And I'm 99% sure that's probably the way we're going. Because when you figure the home out front that we're renovating now, I mean, we're doing 100% rehab of that house. I don't know if you've been watching it or not, but it's 100% brand-new, electrical, plumbing, everything. And the second house would be brand-new, you know, and they're all in the, like across the street, that new subdivision will be in that price range. And so will that be rehabbing that, you won't be able to get a decent house out of it, I don't believe, so.
I would tend to agree.
Yeah.
I've been in there. Yeah, just as you described.
I would prefer to have two beautiful homes right there. That's what our intent would be.
Talking the same footprint roughly, or a different?
Well, we don't have to go that far back. Where the driveway ends now, it could be pushed up towards that area. Hit the red light.
It could be moved forward.
Yeah, we could move it like.
Move it over.
Yes, to get, even give you more privacy for your house in the back.
That's kind of what I'm thinking. Yeah. Cause my house is right here, and your bedrooms are right there.
Yeah.
If you wanna put a house here, it's better in the back.
Definitely wouldn't go that way.
You have to, I'm happy.
It definitely wouldn't go that way.
So for our purposes, if the, if the likely intent is another, a new, to remove that one and put in a new one, the next time you come in, if you have plans that would kinda show ballpark where that more likely would be going forward? Cause it sounds like to me, I initially thought that from the, from the tone, was the hope of something being preserved. I now get the idea that that is not in any way what anyone wants, so, on either side. So easier if we see a ballpark idea where, cause that'll help, you know, a butter see, hey, this looks about where we'd like to put, you know, the, the new replacement home. I think that would probably help everybody. Again, it's not, you know, an absolute, but I think it helps everyone's seeing where it might end up on, on the plan.
And these are all, these are all single-family homes?
Yes.
Correct. Mr. Phil?
This gentleman from Soya's Lane brought up the fact that there's an easement on his, what? If you look at this plan, at the cul-de-sac at the end of Soya's Lane, there's a straight line. I wonder if that is either a lot line or, it's probably a lot line. I was wondering if the, if the easement was there.
When I looked at the overhead.
Yeah.
The way I looked at it, I think it's the lot line because the house, the house's lots then wrap around the cul-de-sac. But just, again, just to highlight, we'll look for clarification on the plans, just to clarify if there is an easement, where it is, and whose it is, and for what purpose it was there. You know, it is possible over time that somehow the easements could have been abandoned by some conveyance, and it's showing up on one plan, but not on another. So we'll let the petitioner clarify those, and for the next time, just have an answer as to if there is, what is it? If there isn't, then that's the answer. All right? Was that it? Your answer? He's checking. I just wanna make sure. Sir, go ahead.
One more comment for the builders there.
Sir, again, just cause you're making a return trip and no one knows.
1440 Andover Street, Clyde Kling.
Thank you.
So when I bought my property, I was told that whole property had eight wells on it. I know where two of them are. Where the rest of them are, I have no idea. So precaution.
Are they point wells, do you know, or they're not artesian wells?
As far as I know, they were dug wells from what I, but, you know, I'm not that old yet. Also, there was a, what weather down about where your cul-de-sac is gonna be, it looks like there's a stream of water goes across there.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else with any other questions, comments, or concerns? Going once. Joyce? All right. With that, I'll return it to the board. Any further questions to the board at this time?
And I appreciate Mr. Gorman coming forward and showing us who he is and.
Sorry I'm late, but.
Name to the signature.
It was conflicting meetings, I'm sorry I'm late, but if any of the neighbors wanna get an idea of the particular homes, we're just finishing up at the Drakeett Golf Course, Four Oaks in Drakeett.
Sure.
And those are the, we've built many of those homes up there, and those are the homes that we'll be bringing to the site here as well.
Feel free to, if you wanna bring a rendering in of something.
Yeah, sure.
Along the lines of what you're looking to do. Again, more pictures help. I think it gives people a lot clearer picture of what the intent is.
Fair.
Anything else from the petitioner?
I think we're set for now, Mr. Chairman.
All right. So with that, what is the pleasure of the board?
Motion to continue.
All right. So our next meeting is on April Fool's Day, my son's birthday.
You guys be ready by then for April 1st?
Yeah.
Yes. So motion to continue this to 7:10 on April 1st. You got a second? Motion made in second, all's in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to agenda item E. 1037 North Street, 1547 Andover Street, 1553 Andover Street, 1563 Andover Street. Site plan special permit, community village overlay district continued.
We seem to have like one family suite per meeting. Cause we have one next, next one too.
It's fairly consistent, yeah, yeah.
We want one more.
This is 1037 North Street, correct?
Yeah. I don't like this. See? The idea's getting, yeah. We'll talk. All right. State names for the record, the floor will be yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Andy Street, Civil Design Consultants.
We are Alanoli, Civil Design Consultants.
John Feneris, a partner in ACC Realty.
So before we even begin, we have architectural plans, renderings that I'd like to submit.
Pass them over.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we are here to discuss the proposed multifamily development, 1037 North Street, 1547, 1553, and 1563 Andover Street. These four parcels are located in the R40 zone with the community village overlay district and is abutted by R40 zoning as well. So we've been through, so far, this is, I think we did two concept reviews with this board. We've been to three IDRs to kinda continue to tweak and refine this layout. What you're looking at here has been, we went to an IDR for the specific set of plans, and this kinda largely mirrors what we showed to this board. This was months ago at this point, but it was a very similar layout to what you see tonight, was what we last brought to this, to this board. So seeking a special permit, site plan special permit for this, for this project here. So combined, these, these parcels, these four parcels are 1.6 acres. Frontage on both Andover Street and North Street. There's an assortment of homes and an old auto body shop located throughout these parcels. Six buildings in total, six curb cuts to go with those, three on North Street, three on Andover Street. It's kind of a mix of grass and gravel and storage containers and things like that throughout the site as well. When we were here originally, it was, I think we started with 25 units. We had about 2,000 square feet of commercial. We kinda backed off all that. The commercial is now gone, and we're down to 20 units. So we've kinda shrunk and condensed this to come up with the layout you see today. We've consolidated this to one curb cut, one access point off of Andover Street. A lot of that was based on some feedback from both this, this board and also from the, from the IDR meetings. These, these 20 units are spread out over, over six buildings, mix of three and four-unit buildings to make up those 20. They will be condoed, and there will be affordable component provided. So 20 units, if we're holding the 15% that is typically held, that would be three affordable units that would be provided. And just to say too, the commercial piece is not required in this overlay. I'm sure that's, that's known, but it's not, typically it is in these multifamilies, but it's not in this particular overlay. Parking for, for each of these units will be in tandem as they are for, for similar developments. You have one parking space inside each unit with the second directly behind it for two spaces for each unit. There's 13 guest spaces, which I don't know if you can pick up with the image underneath, but there's nine spaces here, and then there's four more here. So 13 total guest spaces for these 20 units in two different locations on the site. Weinmeier J, landscape architect, put together a landscaping plan, which is included in your package, that shows pretty extensive landscaping, both inside the site, but also along the perimeter to help shield from butters and shield from the street and, and things like that. Sidewalks proposed along the entire frontage, all the way around North Street, all the way on Andover Street. And we also have a internal network that connects up to Andover Street as well, so there's access for the residents here to get, to get to the street and walk safely. ADA compliant ramps on the site as well to, to allow access for all through the, through the site. From a utilities perspective, everything currently ties in, in Andover Street, although we will likely make some tweaks based on DPW feedback to that. All utilities are actually pretty close to the, to the property line on Andover Street, so, you know, minimal impacts hopefully, if and when we need to connect utilities there. Stormwater is managed, it's porous pavement. So the majority of this driveway is porous pavement, which will capture, treat, and infiltrate the stormwater generated by a good portion of this site. There's also a trench drain, a trench drain we're showing right at the entrance that will catch water from the driveway and capture and infiltrate that water as well. So the, the stormwater design's been put together to, to meet the, the DEP stormwater checklist, in particular, looking at peak flows as they go both off-site and to the street, to, to meet those and to reduce those, to make sure there's no increased impacts to, to the, to butters and to, to the towns, to the systems and roadways and things like that. We did dig test pits as well. We had, we did those in conjunction with the town to, to support the drainage design there. So the, since the, since the filing, we initially had a wetland scientist on site who wrote a letter saying that there was no wetlands on or around the, the property. Was that last, last week? Last week, we had a site walk with the Ms. Gallo from the conservation office there. She's, she's the agent. There was a small pocket of wetland that was actually identified in around this area here. That was flagged. Flags are located. It will trigger a conservation process, so we're working through an NOI, preparing that to, to get that in, start that process as well. And certainly those flags and any changes associated with that will be added to plans for this board as well as we go through. But that is something that we are working through now. We're, we're hopefully targeting a filing as soon as this week to get on early April's agenda, to kinda have two concurrent processes going, going forward. There's a 21E, the applicant did have a 21E, the owner put that together, showing that the site is clean. We'll submit that in future submissions as well. So we'll have that as part of the package that we, that we submit as, as this process moves forward. From a waiver's perspective, we have five waivers we're looking for. The, the building height, looking for three stories, maintaining the 35 feet that's required, pretty, pretty typical for, for these townhomes. The setback is probably the biggest change to this layout from the one that was last year. So there's a 50-foot setback that's required when a, when, when working with the overlay and abutting a residential district. So that 50-foot is somewhere in this range here. And for this unit, we are proposing a, an encroachment into that setback. So we have 33, 33 and a half feet is what we're showing now. And it, this project works without it. I think it was our feeling, it was actually, I think it was suggested in the IDR actually to do this and request this and have this discussion now, because it's, everyone seemed to think it was a better development. It pulled this. The setback is probably the biggest change to this layout from the one that was last year. So, there's a 50-foot setback that's required when a, when, when working with the overlay and abutting a residential district. So, that 50-foot is somewhere in this range here. And for this unit, we are proposing a, an encroachment into that setback. So, we have 33, 33 and a half feet is what we're showing now. And it, this project works without it. I think it was our feeling, it was actually, I think it was suggested in the IDR actually, to do this and request this and have this discussion now, because it's, everyone seemed to think it was a better development. It pulled this apart more, gave some more separation, made the layout nicer. So, that's what we're proposing tonight. Like I said, we can go back, we can, we don't need this waiver. But I think, and it seemed to be the sense of the IDR, that this was a better project with that, that waiver in there.
Just as a clarification point, just so we hear it. The alternative, if you try to make the setback, would be to push the buildings closer together, correct?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it would really be sliding, this whole, this whole run would move further up. I think we maintain the separation between the buildings, they'd just be pushing it all closer to the street. You'd probably wind up with some, some more pavement as you get closer to the street, less landscaping, you know, it'd kind of have a trickle-down effect through all the, the way the site would appear, is what it would, what would happen. But it, we could be done, it just wouldn't be as attractive, yeah. What else do we have? The, the separation between the buildings is another waiver. That's 20 feet is required, we're proposing 10. We have a request for this area here, this stretch of driveway is only 20 feet wide, as opposed to required 24. That was done to, really to try and minimize the opportunity to park illegally, is kind of what it comes down to. The idea being, we narrow that down, it doesn't appear to be enough room to park with people having driveways and backing out of their, their homes, particularly in this area here. So, that's another one, you know, we can make it 24, we have the room. But this, this appeared to be, kind of addressed some of the concerns that came out of preliminary processes. And then the fifth one is, is a waiver of the stormwater management and erosion control plan. We will have a SWIP for this filing with EPA that would, would address those requirements. So, I think just, just to summarize this, and I'll turn it back for questions, comments. We've tried to hit these village residential design guides as, as much as we could. We've consolidated these curb cuts, again, we're from six down to, down to one. These, these properties underused, it's vacant. We're, we're reusing the property for, for something hopefully positive for the town here. It's, all utilities are underground, that's, that's something that the guidelines recommend, strongly encourage, the screening for the parking area, the screening for the abutters, screening along the street to try and have this blend in and, and fit well with character. ADA compliance is provided, we have granite curbing, multimodal transportation, we're proposing bike racks. There's a bus stop in front of this property, so there's some opportunities here for these, these homeowners or visitors to, to access this site from, from several different modes of transportation, and then there's...
Just saw that note, because I probably alleviated it from later.
Sure.
But you saw the note in, from the town engineer?
Did, yes.
Do you have any comment on it?
Yeah, I mean, we, we plan to reach out to the LoL, LRTA to, to discuss it, see if that's something they would be interested in, something they entertain. Haven't had a chance, I think we just got that letter, you know, Friday, so we haven't had a chance to work through that yet. But, we certainly intend on opening some dialogue there and confirming with my client about his thoughts on, on that. I think, I think it would have to be some sort of encroachment onto the property, so there'd have to be an easement and things like that, and, but, you know, there's some considerations there. But, we did see that comment, that was a second comment letter. So, we have, we've, we've got a handful of comments, there was a longer one that preceded that, so we're working through all those as we, as we speak, so. But, I think my last bullet was just dark sky lighting, so we've tried to, any lighting here would, wouldn't spill over into neighbors' property. So, with that, we'll turn it back to the board for questions.
Welcome up. So, I, I believe you're saying you received the letter from the abutters attorney?
We did, yes, yes.
And have you addressed some of those items or all of the items that they talked about? Are they relevant?
I, I'm happy to walk through them if you'd like, specifically. I think I touched on a few of them in that presentation, but if there's any in particular, I'm happy to, to discuss them further.
As long as you have it.
Yeah, we do, yeah.
Until today, I didn't know if you did have it.
Yeah, no, we, we did receive this. I believe we were prepared for the, for the, might have been, I don't know if it was the first meeting, but certainly last one, we were prepared to speak on those.
Well, two things that stick out are the, the screening on the right side. I haven't seen the landscape plan yet, so, what you can address with that. And even today, I mean, I know that ground very well, it's still wet. And there's frost coming out of the ground, I understand that, I think, would you say? So, that almost makes it a puddle all the time now. And I was going to ask about 21E, so you answered that question before, I was able to ask.
Yeah, we will submit that with the next, next submission, yeah, yeah.
Very good, okay, thank you. I'm all set for now.
I was, I was remiss, because Mr. Fowler was just commenting on it, to at least make note of it. We did receive a letter from attorney Peter McNamara, who represents one of the abutters, Kathleen McNamara. And in the letter, without, you know, we'll enter it into the record, but it basically made questions about, concerns about density, potential site contamination, existing soil saturation, water drainage, traffic impact, and air stream buffering, all subjects that we obviously address in any site plan special permit, so they would have been, or have been addressed anyway, or discussed. So, they were concerned with not, we would discuss them. Obviously, there are things that we would deal with, whether they were brought up or not, by one of the abutters, but just wanted to make note of it, as Mr. Fowler just did as well. I think the one that would stand out would be the, the buffering, obviously, because that's very specific to that abutter, as opposed to the more general topics that were listed, so. And obviously, that's what Mr. Fowler just highlighted, so. With that, and we'll move on to Mr. Delaney.
The only question I have was the, the, going through the lawyers thing, the 21E, because the gas station or whatever was there for many years, you know, and it could have made the soil not what it's supposed to be. But he's answered the question, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Mr. Frataya.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a number of questions, and I'll start by asking, you know, we sit in this board every evening, every couple of weeks, whatever, and we get requests from developers looking for waivers, all the time. You know, and I have a problem with that sometimes, because I think because, I won't say you in particular, but some developers come in and want to cram so much into space. We hear it from residents, we hear it from them all the time, about too much into a development space. So, I'm going to bring this issue up as well, because you're looking for waivers here, looking for 10 feet between buildings, correct?
That's correct.
When the law is, the zoning bylaw is for 20, correct?
Correct.
So, with that scenario, I have a proposal for you to take a look at. You're proposing here six buildings totaling 20 units, correct? So, what I'd like you to take a look at is, is reducing the prop, the number of units in this property to, to 18, with four buildings. So, it's going to reduce the amount of cost, I believe, for you, construction-wise, with, you know, four roofs, four buildings, rather than six roofs, six buildings, and just reducing it by a couple, a couple of units. So, the, the property would be like a four, four-unit building coming in, alleviating some issues with space between buildings. So, a four-unit and a five-unit on, on the front side, and a four and five on the back, alleviating maybe some of the concerns you have with the bylaw as far as the setback issue. You know, cutting the number of spaces down, from 20 to 18. I know it's going to affect possibly the affordable unit, but, you know, I have a problem with people trying to put too much into, into, into a complex and, and then being stuck with it down the road, so. That's one of my concerns and a big concern. It may alleviate some of your needs for waivers, if you have enough space there, by taking a unit out on the, on the, on the front and also on the back. So, that's, that's one of my issues. And another thing, coming, as you commit to the complex, being a former postal employee, you have the units numbered 6, 5, 4, 3, 2, 1. You know, just questioning why you wouldn't have unit one, the first building coming in, unit two, three, four, five, six, just, just as a possible change for you.
Sure.
People coming into the complex, looking for building one, don't have to go all the way down to the end, to around the corner to find it, so. So, that's some of my concerns as far as, you know, density on, on the property and, and looking to see if you consider some of those opinions I have, so. And I'll leave that at that right now, so. I'll set, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman? If I may, Mr. Frataya brought it up, I was going to bring it up, and I thought, I was hoping someone else would bring it up. Years ago, and I'm not sure if it's fact now, if you, the fire department, through the building codes, did not want to have buildings separated by 10 feet. And if they did, they couldn't have any windows on the sides.
That's correct.
I don't know what the code is now. I've been removed from that for a few years. So, I think, I mean, going from 20 down to 10, is that something that the fire department, the building inspector, might look at you and say, we have a problem here. So, before we go too far, I think you should address, and maybe then you might have to listen to what Mr. Frataya is saying about numbers. You can design the buildings your way, but just making sure that they're going to be allowable by the people that issue the permits.
Sure. If I may, Mr. Chairman? Yeah, so regarding density, we'll certainly have some discussions following this meeting, talk about that and how that might impact the project. The 10 feet, I, I believe Serene Way is, is 10 feet with those. So, you know, it's something that's happened in the town. We'll certainly have these discussions to make sure it's appropriate. It did come up during the IDR meetings, and there was, you know, discussions about no windows and fireproof walls and things like that, but it wasn't, never came up as being prohibited, I guess, we'll put it that way. Certainly 20 is there for a reason, and you need to, extra provisions for smaller than that, yeah, so.
But you don't want a fire, fire in one building encroaching on another building?
Of course, of course, right.
Just because of the glass.
Yeah, yeah. And then just, just numbering-wise, that's just, it's schematic for talking purposes, but yeah, certainly as we, you know, at some point, if and when we're numbering these with addresses, we'd work with clerk and assessor and things like that.
If I'm not mistaken, I thought Serene Way was also like four plus acres of, of land that they used?
Yeah, no, I wasn't speaking of density, I was just speaking distance between the buildings, yeah. Those were, those were close together. I believe it was 10, maybe 11, but it was, it was less than 20, yeah.
I'll set, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Ryder.
Thank you. I'm going to echo Mr. Frataya's comments. That area, if you, as I travel it probably 10, 15 times a day, some days, you know, if you look at the homes in that area, the impact, I think, putting a two-and-a-half-story townhome there is, is going to impact those residents and the value of those homes in that area. I think the end of North Street, 18, 1836, that home was built. And I think, you know, a, a new home just built across the street, and, you know, you have another, or the other oldest home in town, just off to the left, that has a view of that parcel. I, I do agree that the parcel is in need of some sort of development, but I think, you know, developers come in here, and I understand there's a, a value that you need to reach in order for a development. But I think you need to look hard at the neighborhood and consider the impact of the value on existing homes, what you'll do to the existing homes, not just what the development will bring to the developer. And I think by reducing the density, if you look in the traffic analysis, there's a recommendation of eliminating the three units across from Daring Drive, moving the driveway into that, that will reduce the impact on traffic. And also, if you eliminated that one unit that you're looking for the setback, and, you know, look at altering that two-and-a-half-story building, and I think it would be, the residents in that neighborhood would be more acceptable to a development. And I think it would add value to the neighborhood, but, you know, driving down North Street and turning on the Andover Street and looking at a wall of condominiums, I don't feel that that's going to bring any value to the, to that neighborhood, where there, people have spent a lot of money in rehabbing those homes and building new homes in that area. So, I'd, I'd like you to address those.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so, I know, again, just in the background, we, we've talked about this a few times, and as, again, as a recap, we started off at 25 units and a commercial.
Correct, yeah.
So, at this point, we've, we've asked, and you've removed the commercial, and five of the units are ready. Now, I'm not going to disagree with the other members that have brought it up, you know, from a density standpoint, you know, less would be better. So, you guys got to figure out where your breaking point is, and, you know, come back with whatever that is, and be prepared to argue it if that's whatever it is. If I'm not mistaken, the, the way your lot is laid out right now, I believe some of this was in discussions with us, as to why it's laid out the way it is, but you could have 20 feet between those buildings, correct?
Well, the...
You're at 10 now, if you, again, not, not, not addressing the, the setback at the bottom yet. But if they were, but what you'd end up with was you'd end up closer to the street with the pieces at the top, correct?
Yeah, well, so the, the, part of the challenge is this 50-foot setback.
Right, but I'm telling you, if you go, like you just said, when you were talking about the other setback, if you took the units at the top of the page and sent them further up towards 133?
Which, these, these...
No, the other ones.
These, oh, these could move up, yeah, we could probably space those out.
So, what I'm saying is, much like the one at the bottom, some of the set, the, the spacing can be addressed, but you're asking for the waiver anyways, because of the way the setup works.
I would, the building setback, I know for sure. I would need to revisit spacing, I think, to confirm that, but yeah, yeah.
Again, if, if you end up with less, then it may not be as much of an issue, you may have the room to do it anyways. But, to Mr. Frataya's point, I mean, I'm more apt to be more lenient towards waivers when it's not so much that you need the waivers, that it's more that it's the design makes more sense with what you're asking for. It's not that you couldn't do it, it's just that doing it isn't the most ideal way. So, I, I don't have as much of a problem with the waivers when, like you said at the bottom, if we don't give you the waiver on the setback at the bottom, you can shift the building.
Correct.
It's not ultimately an issue. What you're saying is, the design, the way it is, is better, or more ideal. We can do it if we have to. So, it's not, you're asking for a waiver, but it's not because you can't meet the requirement.
Correct.
It's because meeting the requirement is not necessarily ideal. And that's fine, but that's preferable, is that you could do it if we wanted you to, than if you just can't, okay? But again, if you reduce the number of units, then obviously some of your spacing issues can be addressed. Maybe you go from 10 to 15, so now you're somewhere closer to the ideal number, if that's the case. I don't know, maybe it gets to 20, I have no idea. But, again, I'm, I'm more interested in where can you be on some of the waivers? If you couldn't have them, could you make it anyways? Would you be closer? Is it more of a design standpoint as opposed to a need standpoint on some of the waivers? So, that's, that's part of it. I think most of the others have been addressed by most of the members. The only thing I would say is, and I, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Fowler's my best backup for this, but for most of the buildings we've done, whether it's either on North Street or on 133 at this point, they haven't all been built, but if I'm not mistaken, we've asked them to put like the porticoes in on the top as a, as a design piece. I'm going to ask the same thing here, because I just think it looks better.
Breaks it up.
It, it, you know, and they don't change your height, they're really, they're decorative only. But, if you look at, you know, it starts with the, the daycare building, or whatever it was we started at the beginning, sort of a 133 down there, and we've done that with several. You just may not have seen them, because they haven't all been built. We even did it, we leave to the hotel. We asked for them on top of the hotel that's proposed and in limbo at this point, but that's on North Street. So, in keeping with sort of decor, I'll, I'll ask the same thing, take a look at it, see if you can put them on. Again, it, it takes away from that sort of very stagnant top to everything that goes across, and you get further away from that sort of rowhouse feeling. If they do end up being a little close together, it's just, it helps anyways.
Right.
But again, that's from a decorative standpoint. Obviously, you know, you had, you made the comment on the building inspe, I'm sorry, the town engineer on the, the, the bus thing, and he had, what was the other comment? I forget what the other one was. There's one more, wasn't there?
Contamination issue?
Oh, that was right, you'd addressed that too, so. Other than that, I'm all set with these. With that, I'll open it up to the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns. Anyone? Only once?
Good evening, Jessica Rand...
Good evening, Jessica Randolph, 1484 Andover Street. Appreciate the concern for the values of the neighborhood and the overall historic nature. And I would like to see that really strongly supported. Just a general comment, thank you.
Thank you. Actually, that just made me think of one other thing, as far as the landscaping goes. And again, things may shift now, but especially, I mean, again, it's going to matter for all, the whole perimeter of the property as far as how it looks, but especially where you've got that rather large area up in the front of the triangle there. It's really important that that looks good. So, you know, when that's, when we, when we address that, keep that in mind, that that's, that's an area that I'm, you know, I think it's going to be a focus because of where it meets the two streets, and it's such a large area.
Sure.
That it's going to need to look good.
Right.
You know, I think that, you know, it can't just be one big grassed over.
Can I flip the plane? So we do have, you know, there's some extensive trees here and some smaller plantings behind the buildings, some trees up in this corner, certainly can be enhanced. I believe this is an existing tree, the idea was to try and maintain up in that corner. But certainly, you know, we'll take a look at all of it and beef it up if it makes sense, yeah.
Can Britt bring it in next time?
Sure.
For people to have an idea of what it looked like is beneficial. I mean, the 2D is good for, you know, for the folks who are kind of used to what that means and the different kinds of trees and shrubs and whatnot. But, you know, a general idea of what it looks is-
Sure.
Is helpful to everybody else.
That existing tree is not in good condition.
Not good, well, we can replace that as well.
Okay, so we're still in the public comment section. If anyone else has any questions, comments, or concerns? Once, twice, all right, seeing none at this time. Any other comments from the board?
I have one, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to bring up unit number 20 on your plan here. Do you foresee any, any problems with somebody in that driveway exiting right into that area where they're, they're coming in from Andover Street?
And given the amount of traffic that's expected to be coming in and out of this site, I, I think it's safe. We can take a look at it.
Because he's going to be coming back out of that driveway space right into the roadway.
Sure.
With somebody coming in off Andover Street, not seeing him till probably the last moment, possibly, you know, so.
Sure.
Just a concern, if, you know, again, if you were looking at my plan to move that down and-
Right.
Leave a little more space on that end, so. That's all, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you.
So I, I, just to, I guess, to, to, not clarify, but to comment on what Mr. Fratelli's saying, if you do end up doing a reduction, would it be fair to say, start there at that corner? If that's where you're going to make, start, if, if the number of units comes down, start there and then, you know, figure out your layout. But obviously, anything that makes more room near the driveway, it makes the most sense. But again, you know, the layout needs to look right. You know, we're not going to have a big gaping space in one place probably. But obviously, we just did the other one off of Main Street where we said the same thing, which is the one closest to the street is just in a tough spot. So if one was going to go, that was the one to go.
Right.
And then go from there, I guess.
Yeah.
You know, I think-
Well, we'll certainly be-
Point is, is well taken, that-
Right.
If that doesn't need to be there, that's probably the one that doesn't need to be.
Well, we'll certainly have a discussion following this about, you know, the finances behind all this and where it stands from that perspective as well.
Any other comments, board members, anything else from the petitioner at this time?
Ross, all right, thank you.
With that, what is the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion to continue the hearing, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so I take a motion to continue to 7:15 on April 1st. I have that motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Is there enough time for you guys, April 1st? Is there enough time?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yep.
Yep, let's take a quick break, just take three minutes.
Get a breath.
To order, and we're moving on to agenda item F, which is 2131 Main Street. Special permit, site plan special permit, South Village, Ovalay District special permit continued. Gentlemen, again, if you would just state your names and record the floor of yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Andy Street Civil Design Consultants.
And John Panaris, BT GOG LLC manager.
All right.
Owner.
Floor is yours.
So I will, I think I can be briefer on this, but we've, we've, we've been through three, three meetings now at this point. Last one was, I'd say, about a month ago. There have been no changes to this plan. Essentially, you know, no, no changes to this layout since then. And I believe we were, we were, I don't know, on the precipice of closing out the proceedings last time, held off, there were some engineering concerns still out there. At this point, we got a comment letter from the DPW that has one comment on it, which is a new comment. And I don't see any reason why it's something we can't work through. We should be able to work through that fairly easily. It was related to the snow storage, which we show here. There's a sewer manhole in the snow that the town engineer is concerned will receive water as the snow melts. So we can, we can tweak the snow storage area, we can, we can, we can work through that, whether it's signage or snow storage area or the operations and maintenance plan that will ultimately be kept by the association. I think that's, that's not something that will be insurmountable. Just to recap, some of the big things we have worked through, there was, last time, we talked about the decel, the potential for a decel lane in front of this. We did reach out to the, to the DOT, and the DOT said that's not something that they would require given the low volumes of turns coming onto the property. I believe it's two, somewhere from two to five cars during the peak, peak hours between AM and PM. The Oak Street Way has been addressed both by the applicants' council and also by the towns' council. Similarly, some of the building commissioners' other concerns about parking and building height, things like that, we, we worked through as well. And from another review perspective, we've addressed, essentially addressed all of TEC's concerns, I believe. So we're here tonight with, again, essentially the same set of plans, calculations, and I'm certainly happy to address anything else still outstanding, but that's, that's all we got.
If I'm not mistaken, I think it was a member issue.
It was a member, yeah. Yeah.
Limiteded members for our previous hearing, so.
Correct, yeah.
I believe we were fairly close to. I believe you also have landscaping submitted yet?
We have submitted landscaping, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so with that, we'll start with Mr. Fratelli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did see the landscape plan, looks very nice, with the white spruce and dwarf white pines in there. No problem with that, just seeing the, the idea of the bump out of units six and 11 on the plan. You have some outstanding issues still with the conservation commission, is that correct?
So conservation will be at Wednesday, so that process, that, their last meeting also got postponed, or they didn't have it, they didn't have a quorum as well for the, two weeks ago. So that will be this Wednesday night.
Anything major there, or?
Not that I'm aware of, no. I mean, we've only been to them once, actually, and there was no, no major concerns out of that. And Ms. Gallo has written a letter essentially stating as much. She had a few comments that would get rolled into the permit, really, but no, no substantial plans or drainage issues.
How about the fire department? Did we satisfy their requirements as far as the turning radius and everything else?
Yeah, so I, I got Lieutenant Sawicki, I spoke to him on the phone. And his, his comment to me was essentially that the, the turn movement doesn't go over any curbs, and the hydrants appear to be within 100 feet of the fire department connections. There's, there's a hydrant here, and then another one here. And if that's the case, then he seemed satisfied. He did not issue a letter, but he did say that verbally to me.
Reading the notes here, I did see his requirements, but nothing saying that he's also with it.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
I'm all set, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
All right, Mr. Rata?
All right, thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that you reached out to DOT and that they said they would not require the decel lane. I think from the town, understanding that the DOT has jurisdiction over the road, but I just think that that parcel with the other development that's going to be across the street, I think you're, that, that decel lane is going to help traffic significantly. Have you looked at a design of how that would play out on the, on the parcel?
We have not, but, but it would, it would alter the, the front, the front of the chair. I mean, it would presumably encroach onto the parcel, it would affect site grading. You know, it would be, there would be some impacts to the site itself and probably some sort of easement or taking or something like that by the state in order to make that happen. And again, it would be to serve, the anticipated traffic demand there is, is two to five cars during the peak hours. So it's pretty low demand that that decel lane would be, you know, small amount, small volume of traffic that it'd be serving.
I, you know, I don't believe it's going to serve that small amount of traffic, just my opinion. I think I drive that road significantly. I don't know how often you drive that road, but that traffic there is horrible. From 3:30 to 7 o'clock some nights, both directions. And any more traffic that we're going to put on that road is, is going to impact significantly. And you're, you're looking at putting, you know, 16 condos, potentially two cars per, you know, family these days, and then whatever retail, commercial component that's in there. You're looking at, you know, 10, 12 cars in, in and out for that, depending upon what is planned there. So I think anything, I'd like to see how that would look on the plan, what, what that would do to the, that front commercial building, how that would push back. I also, waiting for a call back to discuss with DOT why they did not feel that it was warranted, so.
If I may, there's, I have the, it's an email, the, I did not submit this, it was just an email, but the quote was, I, I, this is from John Gregg over at the DOT. Read through the study and concur with the projected volumes and the provision of a standard two-way commercial driveway. Based on the proposed uses of the property with a low volume of right turns, the MassDOT will not require the construction of a separate right turn lane into the site. That was the, the direct quote. I'm happy to provide that formally to the, to the board if you want.
Please.
Because again, if somebody asked, somebody down the line, why?
Sure.
We didn't do it. I mean, it's not really us anyways, but, you know, it just fills up the file.
Sure, yep. Thank you.
Mr. Fallow?
While we're on that subject, the other side of the coin is acceleration lane. Now, with the few cars coming out of there, I understand that, but the few cars are going to be going to a road that has hundreds of cars going at the same time. How are they going to be able to take the turn out of their driveway without the ability to go, I mean, from zero to 20? So you can at least cut in between two cars if you have to. Are you going to take your life in your own hands to do that? Or can we have an acceleration lane on the right side? So that when you come out, you look over your shoulder, ooh, I have a little bit of room, and they go. With no room, yep, your nose is going out further, and you just don't get the speed forward enough to mingle, commingle with the traffic flow. I'd like to see, everyone's asking about a decel lane, but there's two sides of the coin. Acceleration lane and deceleration lane. We've asked for it before on Route 38, and we've received them. I don't know what's changed.
No. Well, I guess I would say that if, if traffic is at its worst and not moving, then there's no acceleration to be had. You're not, you're not, if no one's going 20 miles an hour, you're not speeding up to 20 miles an hour. And I mean, again, we're talking about very small, oh, I know, yeah. So we're talking about very small amounts of cars exiting the site during peak hours as well. You know, again, according to the, the traffic analysis that was performed. I believe the, what was the, the previous project? That was a restaurant, I believe, and a retail that was approved on this site. I'm sorry?
No, it was a automotive-
Subway. No, no, previously approved, I'm sorry, and started-
Only approved?
Yeah.
Subway in Taco Bell or something like that.
Right, right.
It was never built though.
My, but the point is that traffic during the peak hours for a use like that would certainly be significantly more increased from, from the minor, minor, you know, traffic we're proposing with this development.
It might have been ringless.
Well, that's not what I was implying, but, but I'm just saying that this condition exists all up and down Main Street for a wide variety of uses. And it's, you know, people, people manage and they, they merge into traffic, and it's, it's the condition of the, of the road itself.
I mean, we all know that, and I think we all know, that Route 38 needs a center turning lane drastically. I mean, it would make so many things safer for everybody, both sides of the road. When you come out, if you want to take a left turn to get on the other side, you can swing over, stop, wait for the cars to go by, zing in. And, but that's not the case. So what we're, what I'm suggesting is only an alternative at one site to do what a center turning lane would do. That's all. And truly, I would like to see the question asked of DOT and an answer in writing from them. Both of them.
We can certainly do that. I would say the volumes exiting the site are largely the same, comparable to the volumes entering the site. So while I can't speak for the DOT, I would anticipate that since they don't want a decel lane in, that an acceleration lane out would likely receive the same answer.
What kind, what kind of numbers, if I may? What kind of numbers would you foresee going in and out of the commercial? Not knowing what it's going to be used for.
Well, the, the commercial use was assumed to be a retail establishment for purposes of the analysis. And that was, I can't speak to what exactly is used in these tra, I'm not a traffic engineer, but the intent of the, the study was to be conservative. And, I mean, it's a 2,000 square foot operation, so it's not a, it's not a large, large building. And it was conservatively assumed to be a worst-case scenario, just like we did with parking on-site. That was what was used for traffic.
All set?
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Delaney?
Yeah, first of all, my concern was the decel lane as well. Or the lane that Bob was talking about. There's got to be a way to reduce the flow of traffic. I mean, I came down there, I think Monday night, not Monday night, like Sunday night, even Sunday night, with the traffic going both ways, okay? When you got there, you had to wait. I can't imagine, like on Thursday, when the traffic is backed up all the way beyond Walgreens, without anybody making a turn. I don't know how you can get into that property with the cars going both ways. Then this- Then this guy over here that's trying to make a left-hand turn into the property, how much further does the traffic back up beyond Walgreens? Now, I'm not talking about like the half this gas station. I'm talking the traffic backs up all the way beyond Walgreens some nights. And when you've got to make that left-hand turn to get into that property, if these guys aren't good enough to let you by, even if there's 10 cars that have to come from the light and go by on the right-hand side, how do you get in from the left? There's no way to get in, and the traffic just backs up further. That's one of my concerns. The next concern is, I wanted to see the conservation report for the back part of that property, because the condos sit up about another 10 feet higher, okay, than the property you have down below. And it looks like there's a trench that's in there where the water runs down off of the back. And it looked to me, the last time I was out there, it looked like to me the hardtop driveway that's in there now are abandoned now, was right at water level for the water that was building up on the side. So the thing is, I just was soaking, I'm concerned about the conservation, and the thing is, I'm waiting for a call back from DOT too. Because, you know, I was under the impression they said, well, we don't need it. But I think we do, or we need something to alleviate that traffic from Monday to Friday. There's got to be a way. I mean, just go out there at 4:30 yourself, without, with the big driveway there, try to make a left-hand turn into that property. That's my concern. I know they're all spouting the same thing, and I know that maybe Mass. DOT said that you don't need it. But we, the board, listening to all the neighbors and all the people and everybody around, that's how much further can we build the traffic up? You know, how much further can we go? And the other car, the other buildings aren't even built yet that are going in there. I mean, it's just not three in and outs, or five in and outs. There's more to it than that. Because the traffic that start there now, how do they get in? How do they get out? How do they even get out if they want to go down the street towards Lowell? That's my concern.
So if I may, Mr. Chairman, so a few points, I guess they're right. So one is that the decelerating lane will only serve the people who are taking a right-hand turn into the property. And typically, those lanes give a safe place for cars to slow down and pull off into a property when traffic is moving quickly. Now, if the traffic is heavy and nobody's moving, they will just slowly make their way to the property and turn in safely. That's, that will, that's the condition that exists today, one we're not fixing, one we can't fix. So traffic will not be impacted by people making a right-hand turn because they were moving slowly to the property and then turning it. Now, taking a left-hand turn, again, that's an existing condition, that's one we can't fix. And if people turning a left onto this property or any property, that's almost development prohibitive, not just this project. I mean, there's nothing that us or any other developer can do to fix the traffic in Main Street. That is the condition. I mean, I understand what you're saying, we're talking, this is a very low-volume use, particularly when you talk about what else is possible on this site, just by, you know, without a special, just by right uses. We're talking about a few cars trying to make this left-hand turn during peak hours. And I understand there's traffic problems, but we can't fix that traffic problem ourselves with this development. And then regarding stormwater, we do have a swale that goes around this property and helps water reach the wetlands. So anything that comes down from off-site will get caught in that swale and go to the wetlands. As far as conservation is concerned, their jurisdiction ends right about here. That's the 100-foot buffer zone to the wetlands. So anything that happens with these condominiums in the back or the rear of this parcel is out of their jurisdiction. So they will review certainly and comment on what they have within their jurisdiction here, and we've taken provisions to address stormwater problems from the condominiums in the back. So that's just, I guess, hopefully to help answer some of your questions, or at least provide some food for thought, I guess, if nothing else.
All right. So I guess for my purposes, it's not that I wouldn't like it if there was a decelerating lane or an acceleration lane or whatever, but to me, it feels like, I think you just commented on, which is, even if you've got the decelerating lane for a right turn, it's only helping the property, not the traffic. The traffic exists as it is right now without anything built there. That's not going to suddenly make that traffic go any faster. It's just going to get somebody home just a little bit quicker.
Correct.
Because they can make the right turn a little slower. The acceleration lane, I would say that in a traffic situation is, makes no difference, but it would make a difference when there isn't traffic. When you're trying to get out onto 38 when it's a better time of day, yeah, then, yes, you can get that ramp up going, we can actually get out of the 38, then, yes. But my one question would be, there's a driveway pretty quickly that comes up to the next property. I don't know how that would affect an acceleration lane working if you could possibly have to immediately stop right then because there's a driveway that comes right up right after that. I don't know how much room you'd have to actually go, you'd have to figure that out. I mean, if you're not going to get a lane for people taking a left turn into the property, I don't see how any of these others are going to actually help traffic. They're only going to help the people who live there possibly get home slightly sooner or get out of their property slightly easier. It's not going to help anyone on 38 going left, right, anywhere. If you don't have a lane dedicated to someone taking a left turn in there, who could hold traffic up slightly worse than it already is, you know, make that left turn when there's traffic, because there's no room. If you're not getting that one, then it's, I don't see how any of the others are going to do anything for anyone in traffic. They're only going to do something for the property itself. If you could get a left lane in, which again, this is a DOT issue, we can't insist on a drop-down lane in the middle of 38 to get people into this property.
Correct.
You know, we should have one, as Mr. Pollard pointed out, there should be one running down the entire middle of 38, you know, honestly, whether you're going to Donuts or, you know, whatever, but there isn't one. That's ideally what should happen, and it would help every piece of property and alleviate the traffic on 38. But holding this up for more letters on a decelerating lane, I don't, I don't understand because I don't see who it's helping, other than the property. Because you're only going to take a right turn into the property, unless someone's going to use it to try and scoot around and move up two car lengths. I'm not sure what that's going to do. An acceleration lane, maybe, I, again, you'd have to get an answer. I just don't know how so quickly coming up on that driveway will affect something like that. You could ask, I guess.
I would have to look at, if we even had the length to install a DOT-approved acceleration lane here, and that's, you know.
You go from your little piece to a driveway, so I'm not really sure how much room there is. But again, I mean, that's really only going to help when there isn't traffic.
Correct.
And someone wants to get out when people are kind of zipping by.
Right.
On those rare occasions when you can zip by on 38. But, you know, other than that, as I understand it, we've been over everything else on this project. And, you know, I'm fine with, if it's the pleasure of the board to wait on, you know, conservation to have their meeting, that's fine. If we want to do that, that's fine. I just don't see where we're going to get any further on decelerating lanes. Again, I'm guessing that DOT's comment is basically, for what?
Correct.
Because that's what it is. If you're not getting the left-hand turn, you're not getting any alleviation to anyone who's driving up and down 38. So, you know, if we want to look at the acceleration lane and get an answer, I'm fine with that too. But other than that, you know, the rest of it, I think, we've addressed, so I'm good with everything else. So that's it for me. Anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns?
My name's Mark Krappman. Eighth Sunset Road, I'm actually in Abada across the street. I didn't get a lot of it because I live across the street from it, but I'm pretty close to it. I drive that area every day. I hear what you're saying about the decelerating lane. I hear what you're saying about, you know, trying to get people in and out. But this isn't just a residential development. They're putting a commercial part in this. So it's a mixed use. How many places do we have on 38 right now that nobody is going into those buildings? So the decelerating lane may not help with moving traffic along 38, but it may give somebody a thought, say, I'm going to pull into that parcel to go into that shop if there's something in there. If you drive by the location and you can't get in and out, and you're looking at that, what person is going to lease that spot? You know, what kind of commercial person is going to want that? The last thing I want, the only reason they're building the commercial part is so that they can get the residential part of there. I mean, I think I even heard them say, at one of the meetings, saying that if they didn't have to build a commercial, they wouldn't. So they're going to build a commercial lot that when people can't get into it and go into the things and feel comfortable they can get into that without standing in traffic, then nobody's going to rent that place, because you're not going to go to a business that you can't get into. It's plain and simple. It's like, I mean, we have plenty of lots up and down 38. We just built a whole bunch of places, and all the developers said the same thing to us. You know, we're going to have, we don't know what's going in there, but we're going to have something go in there. Well, look at what we've built. We've built a whole bunch of residential places, and we got commercials sitting in front, sitting there for a year, a year and a half. Nobody's going in, and we're building even more. There's more that's going right up by, they're building it right now. So everybody's building these mixed uses, but nobody wants to go into a mixed use if you can't get in or out. It's logic. It's like, if you can get into the parcel, if you do a decelerating, and the people could actually get into the parcel or, you know, so speed them up getting out, they don't have to do it. I understand that. But this is also, they're supposed to be good neighbors when they're coming here. If you're going to build something, you're supposed to be bettering the community. What are we getting out of it? I understand they're building apartments, they're building condos, they're building these things. They're going to make money off these things. I understand that, and that's what the big number is. How much can I get? And how much can I build? And how much profit is it? We'll sit here and we'll talk about how they can reduce the numbers, and then they say, well, you know, it all comes down to the profit line. Well, obviously, if you're building numerous parcels in this community, there's a lot of profit to be made off of it. And when we ask for a couple of simple things to try to do something, like I heard one of the planning board members say, the other places aren't even open yet. And we still have lots that's right across the street that's going to be impacting this as well, and that's not developed. And I guarantee you, I mean, this has all happened in six months. I'm sure the one right across the street's going to be in front of us in probably three months. And then, how does that impact us, of what's going on? And if we don't look at it now and ask these questions, because when DOT is looking at it, they're not looking at it for the whole stretch. They're looking at it for this one parcel. I agree. It's only maybe three or five cars or whatever it may be. But when we're adding hundreds of cars, slightest improvement, anything that we can get one or two cars off a road is going to help. It may not help a lot, but it's better than making it worse. And that's what we keep doing. We keep building these places without somebody coming back and saying, what are you giving to the community? How can you give something to it, and how can you make it a little bit better? You're all going to make your money off this, but can you give something back to the community to try to do something to alleviate the traffic? Because it's getting to the point that, you know, 38, we're going to have nothing but empty storefronts. And then who's going to want to live when we have this? I mean, we had that problem 10 years ago when we had malls empty, all kinds of problems. We've got past that. We've got people moving in. It looks nicer. We're landscaping areas, we're doing all these type of things. But I can't see anybody wanting to move into this place. You're going to build it just for the sake of being able to get the residential part in there. And then you're going to have an empty storefront, and that's going to look great on 38, having a, you know, 20 empty storefronts on 38 that nobody's going to move into. What does that do for the values homes? What's that do for our community? Doesn't help.
All right, so again, so that comment would be on a decelerating lane that would be for the benefit, again, of the property. Maybe, and I don't know it well enough, I suppose, but DOT determines whether or not that can be done.
It's DOT's road.
So we can't force, and I, we can ask.
Well, it's DOT's road, but they own the right-of-way. This would not be in the right-of-way of the road. This is off of the right-of-way. So DOT really doesn't have the jurisdiction. DOT can give you the jurisdiction for your curb cut or your entrance or exit in your parcel. But when it comes to a decelerating lane on the parcel that's being developed, that comes back to the planning board. And we're basically just talking with DOT and working, basically having a conversation with them. But they don't have to grant, there's no granting authority for a decelerating lane on the parcel itself. Basically, you're stating to them.
So the lane, the lane connection to the road is immaterial?
Absolutely, because we're not within their layout. And I don't know what the layout on 38 is. Do they own five feet? Do they own 12? I don't know what, from the center line, and they all vary based upon when the road was accepted. So it could be a five-foot layout because, five foot on each side of the road, based upon sidewalks. I don't know what they did back, and I know farther down 38, that's there. But I think these things are the question that I'd like to get answers out. What is the road layout here? Why did you make the comment of, no, it's not required? However, it should have been, no, it's not required. However, if the planning board, if that's something that the planning board desires, that is ultimately the decision of the planning board or the granting authority that would be approving the special permit.
I have no issue with having one, it's not that I just. I guess for me, again, I feel like whatever we're getting is, it's for the benefit of the property and less so for 38. So if that's what the board wants, you know, whether it's for helping the commercial, you know, use on the property or whatever, that's fine. I'm not going to hold it up. I mean, again, it doesn't affect me one way or the other. But in terms of affecting traffic on 38, I don't see how it's affecting positively in any way traffic. It's not. It's going to affect the property itself positively, whether you can get in just a little bit sooner when you're making your right turn. If it improves the use of the commercial, I'm not certainly opposed to it. But, you know, I don't want to hold this thing up forever trying to get an answer out of DOT. So that would be my other point. So I have no problem with continuing this, but not indefinitely, just to get, you know, more comments back with DOT saying, you know, we don't agree. If we're going to tell you that you have to make a decision, then we should make that decision and be done with it, and stop asking DOT for a comment. If the comment's going to be, well, we don't think it's necessary, do what you want.
I think we need a layout first, and that really determines what the layout of the road is. If the layout is, they have 12 feet of right-of-way on each side of the road, then we would have an easement, so to speak. But if there's a three-foot on each side, it all depends what the center line is, and I don't have that information. So once we have that information, then we can make the decision, I think we can make a decision at the next meeting, once we have that information, that it is under the authority of DOT or no, it's under the authority of the board granting the special permit. So I think we'd have that decision after we know the answers from DOT.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I mean, it's, that is the property line, and that is the curb line as it relates to the property line. And we are undeniably altering, to do anything to that curb line, altering the DOT's right-of-way, which requires their permission. Now, part of this decelerating lane, in order to get to conform to DOC standards, might go onto the property, but it's undeniable that it would start in the DOT's right-of-way. And if that's the case, I can't picture how this would function, other than the DOT with some sort of taking or at least an easement so that they can maintain the thing. I can't imagine that they would want half of a decelerating lane that they would saw cut and repave every time they did 38 and then left the right, that's not, that's not how it works. I mean, this would require their permission. It's undeniable, there's no way around that. We can't, this would not start on our property.
If I may, I think, you know, as a board member here, I think it's, you know, our obligation to due diligence for the 25, 30 residents that I've received phone calls from and people that sat here, and I think it's worth going that extra step. And.
So what's?
And that's, and that's our job as board members, to listen to residents and try and get the answers. If the answer come back, the DOT says, no, this is in our right-of-way, we do not require it, we do not want it, then the board can sit there and say, we have the answers. Until we have those answers, I don't, I personally, you know, if it's something, we want to bring a vote, we can bring a vote. But three members of the board are sitting here asking for a decelerating lane or an acceleration lane. I'm all for if someone would like to make a motion to vote on it. But there's three members of the board asking right now for that answer. And. And if you have to, if I have to vote right now, my answer's going to be no. So I think it's worth waiting the two weeks for the next meeting to have these answers.
I guess, I'm trying to figure out what the end game is. What are the answers?
If the end game is that the parcel is under the jurisdiction of the planning board, and you have three members of the planning board requiring a D cell lane, then that parcel doesn't be, is not approved without a D cell lane. That's ultimately where it lands. And it's, we're granting the authority. We're granting the special permit. And that's my understanding. If I'm speaking out of tune, Mr. Chairman, I think, you know, ultimately, we have a responsibility to the residents of town. And if we're being asked questions, I think we have the right and the authority to find these questions, the answers to these questions, so people at home are understanding what's happening. And if we are not able to do that and a vote is requested, then we vote it down.
So I, I'm just trying to understand what the answers are. Because we know we need a highway access permit for that curb cut. Now, if that curb cut moves into where this D cell lane, we redo the site, we would need a highway access permit for that curb cut. The highway access permit would be accompanied by a plan showing this with the state highway baseline on it and how it relates to our property, which is what we did in order to prepare the boundary line plan we have here. So I just want to understand, this is fine. It sounds like this is, this is not headed towards a vote tonight because there's a lot of concerns over this. But I don't understand what information, I guess I'd just like to very clearly be told what information needs to be provided because, to me, I just, I don't, I don't understand. We've talked to the DOT. We have the property line, so.
From what I'm gathering is that the answer you've gotten so far from DOT is simply that they're not going to require a D cell lane. That isn't enough information at this point. We need to know if, where the line is now, if that falls into DOT's jurisdiction and not, it's not your property, it's their setback, that they're going to, they'd have to be the ones to allow a D cell lane. So treat it this way. You're basically asking the question, if I'm saying this right, "I'd like to put in a D cell lane. Would you let me do it?" If it's up to them. If it's not up to them and they say, "Well, it's not up to us. It's on your property. You deal with it." Then we're back to just us at that point. But if this requires them to sign off on it, what at this point you're basically asking, if I'm stating it correctly, is that you're asking to put in a D cell lane. Would they approve it?
If I may, I think, you know, I wasn't on the board then, but maybe Mr. Fowler can speak to this. This happened on 38. How did that happen? So, you mean, there's cases of this on 38, and who required that back then?
The ones that I see, it was DOT who said, said they were okay with doing.
I don't know who okayed it, Mr. Chairman, but it was the planning board that made the recommendation. I'll tell you the first one, closest one to Jermaine's banquet hall, going into which is now Planet Fitness, which it isn't, it's some other, yeah, whatever. There's one there. That was, there was no problem with that. We have two or three others on the other end of town too.
So, again, I don't know. I don't know what the reasoning was for certain ones and others. I don't know if it's what the businesses were. I don't know if it's width of 38 in that area. I have no idea. But at this point, it sounds like the question you're actually asking is, "I want to put in, I actually probably put both in, a D cell or XL lane on these, at this property. Is it your jurisdiction? If so, would you allow it? If it's not your jurisdiction, now it's back to you guys and we can deal with it all here. But if it turns out that it's DOT's call on whether or not you can have the D cell or the XL lane, then the question becomes, would you allow it if we want to do it? Does that sound accurate?
Correct.
Does that sound right?
Yeah.
So, so what we've run into in the past with dealing, whether it's in Tewksbury or other communities, is that we would say something like that, and they would say, "Well, let me see it." Because we want to know how your curb's altering, what stations you're touching on this baseline, how to alter it. So that process where we submit could drag this out for 60 days, 90 days, something like that. So, you know, we can ask these questions and try and figure this out. I...
I guess what I'll say is this. I think Mr. Rider made it clear, certainly from his standpoint. I don't know about the rest of the board, but your choices are either to get this answer or take your chances with voting it without getting those answers. I can't tell you how that's going to go. I think you know at least how Mr. Rider feels. But beyond that, I can't tell you. And I'm not going to speak for anybody else. But what I'm saying is those are really your choices, as I see it, is that you can either move forward and ask for a vote, or you can try and get the answers to the questions that are being asked by at least one to three members of the board. For a vote that you need four out of five. So, I mean, those are really what you're looking at.
Okay.
So, I mean, I'm not going to tell you what you should do and what you shouldn't do. I'm just, I'm laying out what your options are. Or you can argue your point and convince four out of five. That's totally up to you. You know what I mean? I'm not, again, I'm not telling you what you should or shouldn't do. All I can tell you is those are your options. I mean, you're free to call for a vote now. I'm not, I'm not being a wise guy.
Yeah, yeah, no, I understand. We will.
Those are the two ends of the spectrum, I think.
I assume we try and get these answers. I mean, we've...
I mean, I don't know, I mean, again, I don't know how much of an informal answer you might be able to get that might cost you less than 60 or 90 days of, well, it would depend on your layout if you can make it work, but we'd have no problem with it. If that's the answer, then we're in a different situation. Then it's a matter of, okay, well, you got to come up with the drawing. If they say, "I don't care what you draw, we're not going to have you put that in there," it doesn't make sense. If that's the answer, you don't need to draw up anything. If that's the answer.
I think, I mean, I think that's the ultimate answer.
Okay.
If DOT...
If it's a non-starter period.
The permit says, "No, we're not allowing it on that roadway based upon the width of the road. We're not allowing a D cell lane there." Basically, we're back to the next week. We say, we've contacted DOT. They say, "We're not going to allow it." Okay, now we're back here. We're going to bring it to a vote. But if they come back and say it's under the jurisdiction of the board granting the permit on the parcel, then it comes back here and I think we have to make that decision at that point.
Correct.
Okay.
Should I have a comment, Mr. Chairman, if I could?
Mr. Vitale.
You know, I know there's a D cell lane for Jermaine's, and it's been there for a while. Obviously, it was a 300-person function hall, so maybe that was a reason possibly why, because of the number of cars coming in and out, possibly. So, but I also want to mention that, you know, if we're going to ask this particular development for a D cell lane, then we might as well put that in the requirement for every other project going on to 38. Because Tewksbury traffic on 38 is not going to get any better.
Which is part of my concern is because I just don't know how many of these things we're going to be able to pigeonhole up and down 38 for every development that comes up. That's the other thing. And I also, I do, you know, have some sympathy with the fact that, you know, we've approved numerous projects and not done this. And maybe that's wrong. Maybe we were wrong to have done that. I don't know. But it appears it's landing on this petitioner to deal with this. So, you know, that's, that's just sort of where it is, so.
If I may, I don't think it's landing on this petitioner. I think it's a matter, at that time, did a resident, you know, I know I've had calls. I know, you know, Mr. Delaney has had phone calls. I mean...
Oh, yes.
Residents have reached out. So I think, I think it's just our responsibility.
And I think there have been questions even before. What I'm saying is that it has not been addressed in any other project on 38 to date. It'd be discussed, and I believe we've taken the answer of DOT will not require it.
Okay.
And left it there. I'm not saying that's right or wrong. I'm just saying that's how it's been to this point.
No, absolutely.
We're going a step further here, and that's fine. There's nothing wrong with that. I'm not complaining that we're doing that. I'm simply noting, there is no precedent at this point. We haven't done this like this to get this kind of an answer before. So this will be the first time, to Mr. Vitale's point, we may do this to everybody going forward. We've had a few projects. It's come up now. Some of these developments, we've treated them a little different than we did further back because we've seen what we've done over time and felt maybe we didn't do something right. That's fine. And I'm not, you know, I don't have a problem with it. I'm saying I don't have a, I don't have a roadmap for you for how to go about this. This is sort of a first in terms of getting this type of an answer this way. So we'll just have to see how it plays out.
Sure.
So that's sort of what I meant when I said land. I don't have a, I can't give you any more information or direction than what we've given you to this point to try and get the best answer you can by the next meeting. If that's an informal answer, we'll start there and go with that and see where we are. If it's going to require a more formal answer and it's going to take longer, then that may just be where we end up. But I think it would be best to start the process, see what you can get from information, and then come back with it, and we'll go from there. Does that sound?
Yeah, and I think fair enough. If I get information back, I obviously give it to the planning department and they can give it to the petitioner, you know, sooner than later.
Okay.
And once we have that information to expedite things.
Is there anyone else good with that?
Yeah.
Mr. Fowler?
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
You're good? Yeah, and obviously you get your final, I would expect by then, you'll have your next meeting with conservation too, so we'll have a little more information for that issue as well.
I'm just concerned about it.
Yeah, no, but I mean, at this point, it's two more weeks. You'll meet with them. You'll have something.
We'll meet them Wednesday, yeah.
See, I thought when we delayed the meeting, the last meeting we were at, they had a meeting the sixth.
Who did?
You had a meeting scheduled, then I figured, well, okay, I'd get my answer tonight.
Yeah, and they didn't have a quorum, yeah. So they, they kicked their meeting as well.
They, they, there's a bump. That's my biggest concern.
Right.
You know, then the DOT thing.
Understood.
We have to work out.
Okay.
All right. You made a motion to continue this, right?
You have to find a way, and then we have to work with you to get it.
Honestly, I don't recall if we finished with public comment. Was there anyone else with any other questions or comments from the public on this? No? All right. So with that, nothing else from the board at this time?
Oh, you're good?
Nothing else from you guys at this time? All right, so with that.
Motion to continue.
All right, so a motion to continue to the April 1st meeting at 7:20. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. It all is a favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
All right, moving on to agenda item, oh, yeah. Actually, not agenda item, but, no, yeah, it's agenda item, old business. Any old business any members have? Any old business to discuss? No?
No, we have this.
Yeah. Any new business? Say none. Correspondence? We have nothing in there for the correspondence. Town planners report.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So I received a complaint from a resident next to Cube Smart.
Lowell resident, right?
Lowell resident. She's, she's located at 27 Commonwealth Ave. in Lowell. And she had a concern about the vinyl fencing that was recently put in on the north side of the property for Cube Smart. And so I contacted the property owner to work on getting a response. And that was Jay Tillman. And so he's open to extending the fence. There's, he's open to extending it to the curb and then continuing the evergreens to meet it. And so I know the resident had concerns about lighting, noise, et cetera. So that was all in your correspondence package, but I just wanted to bring your attention what I received.
I mean, I have a question. The fence that they're talking about is the fence that goes behind the single-family residence is in Lowell.
Yep, that's correct. Yes.
The fence that is here now, it's a white fence, six feet high, goes all the way down to where you can't put a fence anymore.
So if you look at the image, where it ends is where the 27 Commonwealth Ave. is not, doesn't have screening. So what the complaint was, was to extend it so that her property that's now exposed has screening.
Unless Mr. Delaney and I saw something that they're talking about, that we didn't see something that they're talking about because the fence that goes down there goes in back of every single house, all the way to the end of the property line, and it doesn't go any further because the last, I think maybe 20 feet, is a clump of trees that if they dug the trees up, they'd be in the wetlands.
So, Mr. Fowler, it's, her house isn't, doesn't have any screening, so that was the complaint that I got.
Yeah, well, it might have been.
It does extend to where you're saying, but her home doesn't provide any.
That picture there doesn't depict what's there now. Now, what I'm saying is it appears to us that there are more, there's more fence there, screening, more area than there is on that picture or in that described in the law.
Yeah, so I didn't show that image. I mean, I can certainly provide that to the board if you require that, but I only showed this one image because that was what the complaint was about.
It goes further than that.
Yes, you are correct.
Just one, if I may, they're willing to extend the fence and evergreens. And so, I mean, Ms. Scott contacted me as well.
Yeah.
I put her in with the office. So ultimately, the property owner is willing to extend the fence down and add some plantings to cover, or give screening to her property, correct? Or is she looking for more than what the Cube Smart's willing to do?
The property owner is willing to work with the planning board in whatever you end up deciding. So, you know, he's very flexible, is...
Doesn't look like the fence we looked at today.
I just don't know what she, I mean, I didn't know what she wants.
He's going to extend the fencing so that her home has screening.
I would say, if he's willing to do what he's willing to do, let him do that, and then let's see where we are.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, I just don't know what, how far, how much farther that fence needs to go, or that may be sufficient once he completes those extensions of the fence and the evergreens.
And it may be, it could be that it won't matter how much he does. I mean, you know, we won't know that, but if he's willing to do it, I don't see why.
I think if it's an extra six-foot panel, it's...
Yeah, I mean, the bottom line is the guy's willing to do the extra to block it off so she won't see the Cube Smart. She's going to see it anyway because it's right there.
It feels good neighborly, so.
And she has not been a good, a good person that has had any positive comments about the rest of the board, so I'll pass that along, so. And she's a resident of Lowell.
They're all broken up.
Yeah. And she's a resident of Lowell, and I understand that. We'd like to take the butters' concerns into effect, but I think they're doing above and beyond what they have to do at Cube Smart, so.
So maybe if you would extend from the board, if the property owner would be willing to do that, that would be appreciated by the board and hope that that will resolve the issue. Does that sound fair?
I think it's a good thing.
All right.
Anything else?
That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else with anything else that they just thought of right before?
We drove the whole street.
No?
I'm all set.
All right, with that, we'll take a motion for adjournment.
Motion for adjourn.
All right, motion made. Do I have a second? Motion made in second. It all is a favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Good evening.
Thank you.